Which was the food, did the food help? So.
So. Seconded.
Two sections.
The food committee.
Regularly.
Right here. Yes. So any changes or additions in the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're gonna start with administrative report.
I was like, what? Getting off.
No, sorry. I've already lost track of that seventy bucks.
Seventy five.
Easy come, easy go.
He's not heading down with Fox News.
Yeah.
He can change it if he wants.
Go for it, Tom.
There we go.
Sure.
Okay. I have two letters of resignation to share with the school board. One is for Russell Williams, fifth grade teacher. That one I'd known about for a little while. And then just recently, Gail Greenleaf is requesting that she be released from her contract for next year. So I have copies of this to hand out for people.
What are the reasons now?
Pardon me?
Reasons?
Russell Williams accepted a position at Westminster Center School. And Gail Greenleaf is just, she's, she's taking a break from teaching for a while to pursue some college course work.
Well.
And what does Gail teach?
She teaches third grade. So we're in the process right now of collecting resumes and I hope to start on interviewing for that position next week.
And, and, and Mr. Williams' position, were you?
That, well, I'll get to that now.
Okay.
We, we did do a round of interviews and there's a stack you can keep or pass back. Ron can keep a copy. I'm recommending to the board that we hire Craig Roach for the fifth grade position. His resume here, he comes from Surry Village Charter School. He has a very interesting background. He's very energetic, very tech savvy, loves garden. I think he'll be a great fit at Green Street School. So I'll pass these down to people to look at.
Okay. So before we go further, we need a motion to accept these two resignations with someone, Mr. Green. All those in favor?
Aye.
With thanks for their work for the cycle. And we need a motion for to hire Mr. Roach.
I move that we accept John's recommendation and allow the hiring of Mr. Roach.
Can we take just a second to read it?
Sure. Take a second to read it.
Was he teaching somewhere else?
He was teaching at Surry Village Charter School. Over in New Hampshire.
So it seems like he's, or he's been teaching for a few years.
Yes. He, people think he's, he's like fresh out of college. He is thirty-two years old. He's a little older than that. He just has a very youngish face.
Yeah. So. Certain pitiful.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I need a motion for this when you're ready.
And what grade?
Fifth grade.
Seconded.
Any more questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then a second, we had that new academic support combined with a beep position. And Diane Clouette applied for that. And so she, we had offered her that position. So I would make that recommendation to the board to hire Diane Clouette.
But she was the beep teacher.
It's expanded.
Correct. But it's expanded.
Oh, so we have to officially.
Yes. Because it's a new position where we have the academic support with the beep. So that'll be at Green Street. And that will force Academy in Oak Grove to find a replacement for Diane.
Thank you. So I move for that.
Second.
Any more questions? All those in favor? Great.
Thank you. I'm gonna pass around, I won't go through the whole thing in great detail if you want to keep the report short. But this is a kind of a summary of our Green Mountain Star report, the work that Green Street School did. So there's enough for school board members and Ron to keep a copy. I think Ron may have copies of this already, but just so that you can look it over. I'll go through some of the main points of it, but it takes quite a while to get through.
And I would say as we do goal setting, when we set the date for that, this is the document that you should have read over, you know, bring with you when we do the goal setting because this would be important. And we'll do the same with Oak Grove and Academy tonight.
Yep. So what you're seeing on the cover is just kind of a table of contents. And we, we had a tremendous amount of help from our coach for this process, Casey Merle from the Learning Collaborative, who did a great job in helping us put this together. All the people in the Green Mountain Star process worked with the coach. Casey worked with a few different schools in the southeast region. And Wendy Cohen was the other person who's worked with us. So if you look in on the second page in, there's a list of the five main focus areas that we worked on for our restructuring and improvement plan. And there's shared leadership, student engagement and achievement, safe and healthy learning environment, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And then the pages that follow that is, is a breakdown of those five areas. And gives, these, these are indicators that we walked through in this online Green Mountain Star process. It's a little too complicated to take you through that right now. But when you see this kind of codes written under, for instance, shared leadership, when it lists like RSTO1 is required, these were all different indicators. We had to list through, go through a list of sixty-five indicators and score ourselves on them. These were indicators that related to shared leadership. And we went through those. And that helped us create objectives and tasks for all those areas. So this was a tremendous amount of work that our PLC Committee and our Green Mountain Star Work Group did. And these essentially become our working action plan for the school. There's a little bit, if you dig into it more later, it'll make a little more sense. So on the following pages, you see the five focus areas broken down page by page. In this case, it was a really good exercise. It, it, it linked us all to professional readings that gave us targets to focus on for best practices in education, you know, different schools throughout education process. And so we use that as, as a template. So we go through those, those five areas. Then this page is just three PowerPoint slides that I don't, that I put together for staff talking about some of the changes that we're putting in place for next year. After that is our current action plan with some areas highlighted. They didn't come out on the copy machine, but that's because it's not a colored copier. So some of that work, you'll see in italics, is the work that the Green Mountain Star will be focusing on, some of the ongoing goals that we had set. We also took on this page in with this piece that says draft. This is what's called an MTSS RTII assessment. MTSS means multi-tiered systems of support. It's a lot of acronyms, I know, but that's what the state is referring to as kind of, a lot of people seeing it superseding our EST or Educational Support Team process. And so this was a, a training we went to. They recommended that we take this self-assessment. And so the members of our PLC Committee and our Green Mountain Star Work Group took this self-assessment. And the pages that follow that just are a breakdown of the way we scored ourselves on that. I apologize for, again, these were in color and they didn't come out on the copy here. But this gave us, if you read at the top, this page here, it gives us a chance. Number one, on a scale of one to three, one represents non-inplace at the school, two partially in place at the school, and three fully implemented at the school. And these different areas, the chart breakdowns coincide with the clusters from this other document. So we use that as well throughout our process. Then this detailed, this section that says detailed report, this is a breakdown of the actual printout you get from the Green Mountain Star online process. And if you look, for instance, up here where it says continuous improvement, it lists the definition of that indicator, CIO1, which is continuous improvement. The school's mission statement is distinct, clear, focused on student learning, and includes the important role of the family and is used to guide school improvement. And then we look at, further down, it says how it will look when it's fully met. All decisions are purposeful. Staff and family members will know and embrace the school mission and vision. So that was something that we as a committee wrote. And then we assigned tasks to that. So this is just a sampling of a number of those tasks and objectives we have for the coming year. And those go on for several pages. And then that's, that's kind of the end of the packet. So it, it, it gives you, if you take some time, it does take a while to kind of read through it. And in fact, even if you weren't involved on the PLC Committee like Ron was, or our people in our, the rest of our committee and our Green Mountain Star Work Group, there was, it's difficult to, to understand the whole process. So we did, Lyle helped us facilitate a couple of staff meetings where we rolled it out to the rest of staff so that people can make sense of it. But the good news is, we came up with a really good document with Casey Merle's help and the work of the staff people. And so this is really gonna drive our improvement efforts in the following year. So it was a lot of work and really thankful for all, all the help from everybody. Then just quickly, tomorrow and Friday, we have our kindergarten orientation days. We're having two days worth. So we have about twenty-five kids coming, thirteen, or ten in one group, about thirteen or fourteen in another if they all show up. And then tomorrow also, the, the three town principals and Ron are attending a town emergency planning meeting tomorrow morning from ten fifteen till twelve thirty. That's just to get updates on building security, evacuation processes, and so on.
Where are kindergarten members for you guys right now?
Well, right now, I'm at nineteen twenty. We're, we'll, we'll see where that lands after the summer.
Yeah.
Green Street.
Great. Where's Academy?
I think we're twenty across the board at the moment.
I have twenty plus one child, but it's, I don't know. And then intensive service program. So where their homeschool, they don't come in. So twenty. Plus one.
So we'll be talking about all these much more, so. But thanks.
Ron, Mark, and Keith. Okay. Well, we've been busy interviewing and hiring folks. And I have two, two folks to be hired. I'll, I'll pass around their resume. The first one is Carrie Doggett, who we want to hire for a grade two position. I'm sorry. Yes, it's grade two. No, no, it's grade three.
Grade three.
I'll be okay. Carrie's gonna be in grade three. She has been in grade five. She's been with us for, for several years, all on one-year contracts. We hired Carrie. Carrie was a year-long intern from the Sparks Program, the Social Justice Master's Degree Program. And from there, she, we hired her as a one-year sixth-grade academic support teacher. And from there, for the last two years, she's been on one-year contracts in fifth grade. And the opening occurred in the third grade. And she was doing a lengthy interview process and came out as the candidate of choice. She has two master's degrees and is very active in the school and in the district. I think she's our.
She's the chair of the chair.
Chair. Yeah. So that's Carrie for grade three. And that's a permanent position.
And who is she? She's replacing, who is leaving the school?
It's Emily Harts.
Oh, because she went.
Has left. Yes. We also have a, a one-year grade two position. And we are hiring Liz Castarella. Liz came to us this year in April on April vacation. She filled in from the vacation period until the end of the year in a fourth grade position. It was a medical leave for the last quarter of the year. And Liz came and did an outstanding job. We interviewed a number of candidates and she is the candidate of choice for grade two. It's a one-year position. That teacher is on, will be on a family leave next year. Liz recently got her master's degree done and she, we take it to both really good qualities.
The second grade teacher is on a one-year leave?
Correct.
Per maternity leave?
Yes. Starting what?
Starting a thing.
Starting a thing.
Well, she already has one.
So I need a motion to accept the recommendations to hire students candidates. Any other questions?
People that move around within the school, I mean, we don't have to.
We do, if we do an internal transfer, that's, we don't go to the board with that. We're not hiring them. We have the ability to move people within, actually within Brown County School District. But generally, it's within the school.
But Carrie then comes before us because?
Well, she was not a permanent employee. She was on a one-year contract. And come June thirtieth, her contract expired. She has no right to a position. So she, so she was not a permanent employee. So it is different.
And she's had three years of one-year contracts. So it's, it's really nice that she's been getting her job permanent.
And so we'd hire a one-year person now for Carrie?
Correct. Well, not for her, but, but yes, it is. So we, that leaves us with a, with an opening in, a one-year opening in fifth grade, which is the spot that was previously held by Carrie. And we are in the beginning of a search for that position. We don't, we had not interviewed anyone as of this time. And we are also searching for, we being Jen and I, are searching for a beep replacement for Diane Clouette. And she now has gone to Green Street. And that's a full-time position, permanent, four days at a time, one day at Oak Grove. And we've been involved in the band, I think Ron, probably Yari Corbun, the band update. And just so you know, the, the work has begun at Academy for the flooring, the gym floor. And a couple of classroom works that began in earnest, which is a very tight schedule. Completion date for the work right now is scheduled for about August fifteenth. Thank you.
Okay. So to go back, I still need a vote on these. We don't move in a second behind a vote. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Just trying to get it amazing.
So just to be clear, then at Green Street, you're looking for how many teachers?
A grade three position.
And then there's grade five, one year, plus the one that's shared. And then how many are you looking for?
So at Oak Grove, we have two parrot educator positions open. And one is in. Are you finished? I'm sorry. One is in Step Intensive, which is our four through six step program, vacated by Zach Rose, who's been wonderful, moving on to bigger things, I guess. The other is a parrot educator position that is also through our step, which is emotional. It helps with our behavioral and emotional supports. That is vacated by Hilton Bonnie, who was amazing. Got into Brown University and started school this week. So two major losses for us at Oak Grove. But we're confident we'll find someone that's, we're posting. But no professional staff positions are open. The two parrot educator positions and then the beep position, which we just posted, I think, yesterday. So Oak Grove, we've obviously had our K graduation in our sixth grade night, which was lovely. You asked about kindergarten members, so I was gonna report that we have a hundred and twenty kids registered in kindergarten right now. So I say twenty plus one, the one doesn't attend Oak Grove, but it does represent the numbers from a board's perspective of how many kindergarten kids we have at Oak Grove right now. That we know of. They're out there. So today, we started our K camp, we call it, with our first eleven of our twenty showed up today for K camp for the next three days, which was really exciting. And they started to look at the building like we do in all our schools and get to know the parents and teachers. So pretty fun, pretty fun. Big group.
And this is free to all kindergarteners? Is that how it works?
And then John mentioned that tomorrow, we have a ten fifteen with the town. I actually, at eleven o'clock, already have scheduled Gabe Palazzi, who is my Homeland Security, is coming for my building to walk through. And I couldn't reschedule it. I tried today. I got a little double booked, but we'll see if I can work something out. But it's all part of the security measures. I thought he was gonna be part of that meeting, so I got a little.
I think eventually he will be.
Okay.
So.
But not tomorrow.
Unless he breaks.
I could. The other option was to wait until, he said, September, if he would be back again. So we'd already scheduled this date, so. Lots going on, getting the building ready. These are cleaning up. We just finished our, I'll put a public, Oak Grove swap is finishing up, which is where we take all the materials out of the classroom that aren't in use, and we put them out and teachers take what they want. And then we donate to, got some wood blocks for you.
All right.
And then we donate to, we put it away out to the local childcare centers after our schools have been out. We put it on the swap shop. And then we are making a substantial donation to Hope for the Janey, based on the.
Nice.
Does that include all the lost and found clothes that we're gonna?
We have actually had those smelling things out for the last three weeks. So if there's a name in them, we call them. If we can wash it, we'll use them. And the nurses, we do, otherwise, yeah, they get donated.
We do the same.
Yeah. Well, as it should, someone should use it instead.
I think that's, give us one.
Yeah. Congratulations on getting through another.
Yeah.
So just in terms of hiring, let me just jump in with the instrumental music. And some of you can provide more detail than I can about the screening committee. But I know we've had a screening committee, which includes Andy, John, not yet.
On Tuesday.
Jill, Lyle Holiday, Tony Spron, Zoe Spron. Tom, that's shotgun from middle school. Deb Resswood. Anyone else?
Can I say?
I believe it's Brad. Yeah. Music teacher and. So I think there was an initial screening of applications that involved Steve Rice, Tony, and Tom, and then went to the screening committee. And I think there was six interviewed.
Correct.
Six candidates. And it looks like there's gonna be a second round with three people coming back. And what I'd like to do is make sure that the board will authorize the ability to hire because we have this interview process ending Tuesday. And it seems like there's a very strong candidate, or two. And we don't want to lose the candidate. In fact, if the person is available and the committee is saying this is the person that we want. So as we have in the past, we're gonna do a motion to authorize hiring. And this will be one of the first hires, I believe.
So we do a motion to hire just a music teacher? For, for the power of the music teacher? Or are you asking for blanket motion for?
I think in the past, we've, we've done it for other positions.
Right. I fully expect within the next ten days to be hiring a, a grade teacher, one year, and then the beep person. And this time, you have to move fast.
Yeah.
Yeah. Especially since we may not meet again until August. So we don't want to not have those positions to be filled because of waiting for us to meet. So. So that, so anyway.
I move that we authorize Ron, the ability to hire teachers, a music teacher.
And. Other musicians and or others, right?
And or other. As needed.
As needed.
Yeah. And it would be as recommended by the principals.
You have that, Jay? Second for that?
Second.
Any other questions with that?
Can he play this before?
Part of the.
The three finalists are women. Can they play this before? What?
Actually, we didn't hear any of them.
No.
Oh, really?
Or what? There was no performance or, or an actual.
Get less. Okay. So do we have any more comments because we need to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
I would just ask Jill and maybe anybody else on the screening committee, those two guys. Do you have a sense of? And John?
What's that?
Screening.
So what was it like, this committee?
No, I'm not asking what many was like. Kind of the process with the candidates. Could you just talk a little bit? Jill?
Well, as you said, it went through music teachers so that they could actually screen and help Lyle. Lyle said there were over seventy or seventy-five candidates, which I thought was quite incredible. And then we interviewed all six. One was by Skype, the rest of them were all in person. And we had, we all submitted questions. I'd never been through part of this, maybe you guys all have, are ready. But I thought it was really quite organized and well-done. Including, I appreciated an explanation of legalities and things that we could ask and that I was like, no. So it was good. The entire process, we all had a bit of questions, including, you know, from the music teachers, some very specific music methodology type questions. And then from the sixth grade teacher from Green Street, also the collaboration within the staff and the teaching staff, the administrative staff, and the other musical teaching staff. And then, of course, with Tony being there, the collaboration with the vocal music and the general music that goes on. And then I came at it with some questions too, from perspective, perhaps as a parent. So and we had one, we were very impressed by all the candidates that we did. And we had really unanimous feelings as we went through it.
Yeah. It's, it's good that a committee like that, for a, a position like this that serves all three schools in a feeder system, in a sense, with this consensus from that committee. So I was, I was pleased to hear that.
And I guess I summed it all up when I went home and said to my husband yesterday, I said, I'm actually excited. So that I, I don't know, it made you look excited too. But we felt like there were really qualified people that had come forth.
Great.
Yeah. Our finalists are great. Just see the program growing, make a big step forward for the program and all that you school.
Great. It's always exciting to hear.
Now we have to land.
Yeah. Now, yeah, so now you have to make sure that you get. Deb?
So I am planning to attend the safety town meeting tomorrow as well. And on the facility side of things, we are looking at doing some major reconstructive work for the chimney at Canal Street. And one of the preliminary bids we received is twenty-one thousand dollars. So it's a big, big project.
To remove the chimney air?
It's just, it needs to be shored up and reconnected. And so we're, we actually put that out to bid a year ago. And for lots of reasons, with the advice of Scott, we were able to hold out for a year. And we're, we're thinking that we actually need to go through the whole bid process again because one of the bidders came back, one of the bidders from last year and said, oh, well, I looked at it more and it needs more work. So we're gonna need to bid it. And we'll be working with Scott to get a look.
Deb, is this the primary chimney at Canal Street?
Yes.
And are any of the leaks that we pointed out down in the building themselves?
Are in the building?
Any of the cracks that we pointed down inside the building?
I don't know the level of detail with that. But I, I know that it's significant and that the concern. and that the concern is that we need to, the chimney will fall down if we don't really, you know, secure it.
Is there added expense because of the historic nature of the building?
I don't think that's part of it.
Okay. Well, that's good news.
Yeah, yeah.
Because of the history of the store?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, anytime we do any kind of renovations to the building, we have to really get the plans of the historical commissioning, because it is on the register. So, we can do what we want, basically, inside, but we cannot affect anything that might change the look from the outside.
But falling down chimney would change the look from the outside a little bit, so.
Or perhaps the security and safety of the building.
Yes, right. The entire management team and our IT person, along with our child development assistant specialist, attended this kind of a mandatory training that was delivered through our regional Head Start office in Springfield, Mass. yesterday for two days on data, the use of data, the idea of collecting data. And it was a really good training that has set us in motion. And it was timely in that when we had our review in April, which, by the way, we should have received that report by now, we have not. I have some indication of what's on it, but one of the challenges was that we have one foot in and one foot out of being fully computerized with our records-keeping systems. And there are some challenges in that, for instance, the state of Vermont is not totally on board with being, having it written computerized, yet the feds would like that. So, we have those challenges. This training really helped us move beyond the gray area. You know, computerization is pretty black and white, but the work that we do is gray. And so, it helped us really understand how we can translate our work into useful data. And the training also was about how we can change the culture of our agency to get people to really embrace this and to engage in it. And so, the consequences of that have been that we had two day-long strategic planning sessions yesterday and today, we being the management team, along with our IT person and our assistant child development specialist, to talk about how we are going to really move the entire staff to the place that they are engaged, comfortable, and using, collecting data, and putting it all in the computer. And then, and then drawing that data down at different times throughout the years to analyze it and to look at what we're doing and the impact. And it ranges, it ranges from, you know, the classroom curriculum and children's development to what's happening with our facilities, to human resources information, training needs. It's, we spent most of today just talking about the entire functions of our agency and just how much of that could go into some kind of a system. And we do have a packaged system called Child Plus that's pretty popular with most of the Head Start programs in the country. So, a follow-up to, and we've developed some strategic plan around that particular focus only. Took us two days to do that. We'll continue to do more strategic planning next month. But we are going to bring in our trainers from, who own the Child Plus system, to do two days of intensive training for every employee, including staff and family support specialists, because we want them all to be putting that data in now. So, that's really exciting. And we talked about some ways to really get staff buying into the process. So, hopefully, the next time we have a review, they can, a federal review, they can just click the button and it's all there, and they won't be going between the computer and paper files, so. And we'll be using the information, it'll be helpful information for us on a regular basis.
Does that also include that in kind?
Yes, that's a big part of it, yes. So, the, every year, the first, the last two weeks in August, we close the agency down and do new service training. So, the first two days of, first three days of that period of time, we will do this data focus. We'll be doing a retreat with staff, particularly around data, and then doing the Child Plus training that following Tuesday and Wednesday. At the end of that week, which is August twenty-third, we are having our annual staff retreat at the Hermitage, and Madeline Keenan is going to be our speaker. You are all invited.
August twenty-third?
August twenty-third at the Hermitage, and she'll be speaking at ten o'clock in the morning. And she's been delightful to, I just decided to call her one day and say, would you like to be our? And of course, she would like a big audience, and there are seventy of us now in here, so there is room for more. And I told her that I would extend that invitation. She's written two recent books, they will be available, there'll be a book signing event attached to that. And she's going to talk about the importance of working with families and the impact that we have started with our work at a very tender age. Pretty excited about that. And then I guess finally, just a reminder that tomorrow night in this room, well, tomorrow afternoon, between three and five, we will be hosting a farewell party to Sue Dyer, who has been with us for twenty-two years. And you're all invited.
The only other thing I have unfinished business is the nutrition ring. And we should have gotten information from Jim Kane.
Yeah, he sent it off.
Does everybody have it, or do you?
So, he had passed along the financial information. He also talked about the three vendors and the principal's recommendation, and then he also talked about the universal breakfast program, which the three administrators provided feedback on that. I think the key is that the recommendation is to stick with Cafe. And if at any time in this contract, there's a different feeling about universal breakfast program, Cafe is very willing to support that, so. I don't know if you have questions on that?
Yeah, I, I think it was pretty clear in the interviews that we want every kid to have a good breakfast. All three vendors made it really clear that they could provide that. And so, I'm kind of confused about the additional one hundred and ten thousand dollars. So, I thought, they indicated that the, there was enough, there were enough subsidized meals that there wouldn't be an additional cost to provide universal breakfast, breakfast for everyone. So, there wouldn't be any stigma attached to kids having breakfast, there wouldn't be any requirements that they'd be qualified for during this lunch. It seemed like, so I'm surprised to see one hundred and ten thousand additional dollars. Is that real money, or does that get paid by the subsidy?
I understood differently that they would have had to calculate the cost because the, there would be an anticipated increase in the current use of breakfast. And so, that there are additional costs, because you'd be serving additional food and spending additional time. But I understood that, like you did, that it would be, it would be covered by the revenue generated from the program. So, I think because we hadn't bid out the project with the universal breakfast, the way I understand it is Jim asked them to come back and just to revise their bid with that extra cost in it. It doesn't necessarily really, it kind of zeros out. You can see that, it says, it'll take me this much more money, but it zeros out. So, yeah, all three vendors did sort of say that it wasn't gonna happen. I think, you know, the other thing is the, you know, just not having heard from the administration. There's, I think, Andy spoke at the time really clearly about how schools really wanna encourage families to be together and eat together and have their own supportive morning routines, and that we don't wanna stop that from happening. And breakfast still is readily available, the kids can have it, so. I think, and then there's just the big elf in the room of the busing schedule, which just makes mornings, you know, at whatever school you're at, really, your.
Since I wasn't there, I guess if somebody can clarify for me. What we have now currently is any child who wants to have breakfast, can have breakfast, and you just pay at a price according to your free and reduced lunch, right?
Right, so students that get free and reduced lunch qualify for free breakfast. Free and reduced lunch means free breakfast. Students who don't qualify, that's sixty percent of our case, students who don't qualify for free reduced lunch, pay, can pay for breakfast, I think it's a dollar.
And that would be, that wouldn't be the case now, they could go, they could go without paying.
The universal breakfast.
So, universal breakfast, it would be free breakfast for every child who shows up for breakfast.
So, we're really only talking about the forty percent more, but those kids could get it before anyway?
They get now, they have to pay for us, what this would do would mean they could get it. So, first without paying.
So, I'm confused, what would be a negative of offering that? It's not costing us any money.
Well, there's, there is, there's, there's.
It's logistics.
There's no negative, what it is, you said.
Difficult logistic.
Well, I think we were talking about, so breakfast will still be offered and will be offered for free. I think what we were talking about in the context of that whole discussion was finding ways to really up the usage of the breakfast program, because right now, it's very, it's not as many kids as could possibly use. And so, by making that program in the morning a lot larger, it has necessarily some logistical impacts. And so, that, but, so.
So, we can't just take the universal breakfast and only end up feeding us or the kids that come to school or whatever number it is now?
You could. It's, right now, it's less than twenty percent, I believe, in the, in the town comes for, comes for breakfast, regardless of how they're, how they pay for. So, you could just eliminate the pay, so that that twenty percent, or whatever percent it grows to, is free.
I think the, given the flexibility that the vendor has described, and particularly Cafe Services, 'cause they're gonna go to pads now, tablets, for checking, for checking kids off when they pick up their, when they get their food. And the ability to meet the, to meet the buses and the ability to do a grab and grow and the flexibility, the statute is up until ten AM, breakfast can be, can be available to kids as a free breakfast. So, there's a lot of flexibility there. And for kids that are late or kids that don't want to eat, then they can take it and then have this part of the snack as well. But I think that, sort of, there's a lot of data that show that, that proves big conclusively that kids that are well, they get good breakfast, with good nutrition, perform better, they behave better, and they're obviously healthier to their lives. And we had this letter that the, I think it was the Abbey people brought in from the sister principal at St. Albans City School, which is probably similar to ours. So, St. Albans has got about seven thousand people, and they've got two elementary schools, one in town and one in the St. Albans paperwork, Allison had her first teaching job. And she talked about adults commenting about the fact that students are eating calmly and socializing, that the behavior in cafeteria improved, the flexibility of the grab and grow, cuts back on visiting the nurse's office because of the crackers, or wanting early snacks, your kids being hungry. The, there's no disparity of options, there's no stigma with getting a free breakfast. And it's a PBIS school, and she's, she's indicating that the behavior, and this is a specific data, not just generally about nutrition, specific to a Vermont school with PBIS, that refroze the drop significantly, significantly. And we know meeting the needs of hungry children changes their ability to concentrate and engage in learning, it's critical. So, it just strikes me that this is really important and really valuable, it's really gonna help kids. And it's hard to imagine that families that now are having breakfast together are gonna stop having breakfast together. And I don't, I haven't, I mean, I'm not sure how, well, I guess that's enough. I just, I don't see it having any effect. I think the biggest problem is that you have to deal with the logistics. But it seems like the benefits of this program, and all of them, and we were all very excited about it when they described it, the presentations, and they all indicated that they were able to do it and could be really flexible, and could make it work, would make it work in our schools. And we know from Cafe Services that they will. And Abbey Group is doing that already in St. Albans and Bennington, so they have it, they have resolved a lot of problems. And a lot of the questions came up about implementation issues, and they were, they were pretty, pretty clearly resolvable. So, I think, I mean, as I said before, we really want kids to have a good start, we want them to have a good nutritional start today. And I recognize that there are logistical problems, but I, you know, I think we need this program. It's a great opportunity to have universal breakfast for all these kids.
Anecdotally, in my household, when we switched the schedule to have the younger kids come earlier, you know, that, that really changed things in terms of breakfast and, you know, and Meg going to school, 'cause she's going earlier, and, you know, not hungry, because she's just gotten up. So, I think that has had some impact on, or potential impact with families of, younger kids going to school earlier making it harder to get a good breakfast into them before they actually get out the door.
I wasn't part of that, but David, maybe you know, in the schools in St. Albans or when Cafe Services talked about it, in those schools, did they have their own kitchen, were they preparing their own food? And also, did they have their own place for kids to eat that wasn't also their gym and cafeteria auditorium? You know, that was?
I don't know. St. Albans has their own cafeteria.
They have their own cafeteria, so there's a place where kids just eat, it's not. P E class at eight thirty-five. And they have their own kitchen and service there that they're not running, they're not a shared kitchen like we have. So, what do you two do for breakfast now, since you're gonna have your own?
They, it's, they, they bring it over in a Cafe Services van. They have some partial preparation, they might heat some things up in a very small kitchen we have in the downstairs of Green Street. He rolls it in a cart into the gym and we serve them in there. And as, you know, you talk about logistics, it is, and it's a, it's a race to get that done every day. We have seen the number of kids expand, even in my time there. There's probably, there's probably gone from thirty to about sixty every day that access that already. So, it is good, but it's, then it's a very tight schedule, because then they need to get back to academy, start preparing lunches, so.
One of the things that I think we had brought up with that whole, with the idea of breakfast, is finding ways to use that sort of breakfast subsidy and apply it to the morning snack. And they were, the healthy, you know, the snack.
The healthy snack, yeah.
And, you know, again, 'cause I know that the snack preparation takes up a lot of staff time. And the Cafe Services people were like, well, we're really open to, like, doing that prep and then just, and having, so having that kind of stuff come back to them. So, I'm, you know, aside from the, you know, choosing the vendor, you know, I would hope that maybe we could find some ways to work with, to ask a little bit more of them, especially in the, you know, I don't wanna see a pair who could be doing teaching slicing vegetables instead. I mean, and I know that that happens every day, and it's fine, but I'd rather use that person to be doing something else and have the Cafe Service person, you know, dealing with that. And because, I guess because of the way the statute is, because breakfast can be extended to ten o'clock, it gives you more space in the day to get food into kids in a way that, I'm just thinking, maybe be more creative about using that Cafe Services staff to get things done that need to be done.
That would make a big difference.
And I don't think it's gonna change our costs that much at all, and they seem very open to try to do that.
I would think outside of the bidding process, I would love to see Cafe Services put that in writing and what that would look like. I know for us at Oak Grove, since we've gone to preparing meals at school, which is great, my one person that's there by herself till ten thirty is running until the ten thirty person comes to help her get ready to serve lunch. That means Cafe Services will probably have to find more personnel, too.
Yeah.
I think we're very lucky as schools to have our fresh fruits and vegetables grants and our healthy snack, which means kids are getting that snack at nine thirty or nine fifteen, nine fifty and ten, I think, so. I feel very fortunate to work in this district and be able to say that to the kids. And I think, just so you know, when our kids go off the bus, we have, we know which kids want breakfast every day, even when that bus arrives late, and we have those breakfasts. If we have them traded up and ready to go, they tend to eat in their classroom.
Yeah, you're saying kids are getting it.
Yeah. So, I can say from Oak Grove, I could be wrong, but I don't feel like any of our kids are missing breakfast. So, I, I can say from Oak Grove, I could be wrong, but I don't feel like any of our kids are missing breakfast, whether it's at home or at school, that they are, regardless of where we go with the program, but...
That's good.
So, I, I think based on the administration recommendation, and the stated goal that the district should do everything it can to ensure that every child has breakfast either at home or at school, principals see that.
Yeah.
And so, we know that Cafe is willing to work with us, that's the recommendation for the contract, so I would ask that we support that, that recommendation. I, I don't want to do that, I want to go with, I want us to have universal, so I move that we accept the Cafe Services bid with universal breakfast. I think it's too important to...
So, you want to disregard the administration's advice?
Yes, yes.
So, is that an actual motion of second vote or a secondhand discussion, or can I ask a question?
Yes, ask a question.
Can the administration explain why you don't, I mean, it doesn't, I don't, I can't quite wrap my head around it except that it's logistics, is that really?
Well, I think if, we want to do everything we can to ensure that no student comes to school, arrives at school, or goes to first period class without any, well, we guarantee that every kid has, has a good deal. Ideally, you know, it's, it's, it's worth, it's worth the dollars, ideally it's with parents, because we know that kids spend far too little time, mine included, with their parent, so we want everything we can to encourage that. And I'm not arguing that this would, this would take that away, we just prefer is what we encourage, that I think is the most ideal. One concern I have besides logistics, and certainly if there's a way to make this free for, for people, I'm all for it. The issue is, I think, grab and go, grab and go and nutritious breakfast are not synonymous in my mind from what I've seen, and I don't think it's like Cafe Services, it's going to be the same with whomever gets the bid, because when you give it, I don't know exactly what it costs when you add in the reimbursement statement that breakfast cost, but if milk costs 65 cents and if you drive it a dollar, there's not a whole lot of room there to, to buy quality products. A lot of what goes out with the grab and go is a small, I think it's a four ounce or a six ounce container of fruit juice, high fructose concert, this got nothing to do with good nutrition, anything that has high fructose concert is not nutritious by definition. And if they can, if we can incorporate our, our snack program, healthy snack program with them to support that, I think that would be, would be great to ensure that, you know, that we can continue that. You know, I think that would be wonderful. We don't, we don't serve anything with, with high fructose corn syrup and that. I'm pretty sure that we are GMO free in that program. So, a lot of things like that, we've, we've been able to avoid, I take it, really high ground on nutrition, and I'm not sure, I'm skeptical that in this program we would do that.
They didn't, I remember them mentioning yogurt, and I can't remember the other things they said would be in the grab and go, but it definitely wasn't, it wasn't just...
Well, a lot of yogurts have been asserted, are, are...
Yeah, they have sugar, yeah, all of them have sugar.
Yeah, and high amounts of sugar, so...
And all sugar is half fructose, so whether it's high fructose or not, you know, they stated that. But they, they talk about the increasing student participation rates, we had an impression about that. And, and then again, the improvement in behavior and the kinds of achievement in kids' diets, and I just think that, that overruns those concerns.
I'm not disagreeing, but I, one thing I was cautioned, is when a letter like that, when, when any schools, it's, it's pretty good advertising, many schools says, well, we did this. I knew a principal one time who, they had dramatic decrease in their, in their school discipline, middle school principal, and he says, because of the banners we put up in school. You know, we had a big decrease a couple of years ago in general assistant principal, 50% decrease in our office referrals, and it was a lot of things that we did.
It was paid.
Mainly Jim, we put a set, that one was, this or was that. Again, I'd be skeptical.
It's not, I mean, this, this letter is specific to St. Albans, but there's research, clear data that indicates that good nutrition improves behavior and performance.
Absolutely, absolutely.
What she may be saying, that's not controversial.
So, so I guess, so I'm trying, so trying to look for a way to, to, to find a solution. Because one of the things about, that is also recommended is that, well, A, it's a five-year contract, but it's renewed year to year, so there's, with at least two meetings with Cafe Services and the administration and the board.
Have we done that prior?
We've met, yes, we, well, in my time, yes, we've had interim...
For five or for three?
No, we've done the year-to-year thing, but also we've had meetings with Cafe Services, and as I recall, we talked about increasing participation in breakfast. It's a, it's a discussion we've had a lot. So, I am just wondering if, if over the summer, in working with the vendor, you can maybe explore some ways that, which might include them having another staff member, to do, to do things like have them be more helpful around the healthy snacks, you know, and, and seeing, and, and the pricing around breakfast, working it so that, so that we can offer free breakfast to all students. And if it gets to a point where there's logistical issues, well, then they'll have to be worked out, but it would be nice to go into the fall saying, okay, every kid can have free breakfast. And then if you're like overwhelmed, well, then obviously, it's something, but I don't, I don't know that people's behavior is going to change that radically. But I, but I do think, they did offer, you know, some flexibility in, in their staff in helping prepare healthy snacks in, in all schools, and I think that that is something to grab on. So, would that start to get you towards, because, you know...
Mark, I have a question for the progress.
Is the, David, is the issue, the bidder, would your point change who we want to award to?
No.
Because I, I don't see where in this letter from Jim it says, I mean, the paragraph says, the administrator does not recommend implementing a universal breakfast program at this time. That doesn't mean we can't offer them the contract, right?
Exactly.
Oh, no.
That, it seems as though the decision as to whether to offer the universal breakfast is an internal issue, and the awarding of the contract is an, an external issue. Who are we going to pick among the three?
Well, they're separate issues. One is a policy, are we going to offer universal breakfast? That's a policy, and then the other is award a contract implemented policy.
Right, so we could agree and award the contract and have further discussion about universal breakfast as an element of the contract, right?
And include healthy spending, perhaps in that.
As I understand, universal breakfast was almost a cost neutral.
It is.
And one of the vendors mentioned the fact that the breakfast they provided for us, tasted and was using USDA-provided egg, spam, and cheese at no cost. And...
What's the firm?
And de facto, right now, don't we have a universal breakfast program, except that they don't leave, where any kid that's hungry in the morning is going to get fed something?
Well, we charge, we charge those who don't qualify for free reduced lunch.
Yeah, so there will be a charge, but the food is available if someone is, is hungry.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I think one difference for us to be, right now, we, you have to, breakfast is closed at the beginning of school, with exceptions, like when that bus crews in late, we...
Right, we'll hold it.
We, we hold breakfast and do things to get a small amount of kids breakfast. To, I think, one, one concern that we would have is if we open that till 10:00 and do a grab and go and have to figure out a system to get breakfast to classrooms or have kids come down who, we have a real tardy problem at school, lots of kids come tardy working all the time, but to have them come down at 9:30 for breakfast, which is 10:00 for breakfast, we have to figure out how to send like breakfast to them. Those logistics, I think we would, we would find to be pretty disruptive to, to the operation in, you know, of school and to interfere with the academic.
And why are you saying until 10:00? I thought that was just like the timeframe that they could do it by law, but couldn't each school make a decision at what time you're going to close breakfast?
I think something about 10:00 from bed or around, was it?
But I thought that was like by law.
10:00 is when, they can serve food and be reimbursed up to 10:00. So, if they delivered snacks around to all the classrooms, or, or once, once it's around 9:30, that would be included in the subsidy.
Or, so we could, that doesn't mean that we can't say each school, this is the time we close it down, so...
Well, but if you, before you're saying by universal breakfast is that, we're doing pretty much what we're doing now, only it'll be free for everyone.
Yeah.
Right.
And we'll try to find ways to, of course, break snack, healthy snack with Cafe Services, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think that's it, yeah. And I, I, I know it's a, a pain, but I can't imagine that you wouldn't be able to work it out, given all the other things that are in work, I mean, that you work on.
Well...
It's just, it's, you know, it's going to be a hassle to get it established, but...
Well, that's not a hassle.
If we change the culture so parents are aware that there's food, they're going to get their kids, they might just get the kids there earlier, because they know they can get something to eat. Because one of the things, another thing they point out is that, there's, particularly with kids, a lot of lower-income families, there's real, real pressure to get nutritional food, to buy decent food and to get it to the kids. So, they may just see that as a great, exactly a great opportunity to, to get a, a good meal at school, another good meal at school, and, and get the kids on time. I mean, I just, I want us to try it because we know that it's going to help the kids if we can give them good breakfast.
Right, I think, well, we, as long as we can say that there's a shut-off.
Yeah, shut-off.
So that...
Yeah, I think, I think, I mean, I, I mean, I'm just, because what I say is that it's not for us to tell you how to do it, but it's just to say, so, so let's step back, because the first thing we want to do is, we have a recommendation, we'll award the contract to Cafe Services, and so I'm wondering if we have a motion we're going to...
But what is the contract, does it include?
Now, we have to say what includes.
Can I, I know this is out of order, but I think before you approve universal breakfast, I mean, I think what we do now, if we could open that up and be free to all kids, that would be awesome. I mean, then we'd be totally supportive of that. My experience with Cafe Services this year is that more time in my school was a, was a cost increase. So, even though they've talked about this, if we're asking for more personnel, just at Oak Grove or even Green Street, that the board first find out what that increase is, because I, I think there won't be a cost increase for personnel.
Yeah, because right now, we have one single person that comes to do breakfast. I think if you're going to have, open it up to everyone, you'd have to have two servers, because they're going on straight clock.
So, for them to do snacks or any of that, that means someone is in that academy prepping lunches, so I think that, I don't know how they would absorb that cost.
I think it may be worthwhile to do that, but they were, the, the four men who run the, the operation were, were absolutely clear that they, they would make it happen and that, you know, they'd be glad to and they'd work it out. So, I mean, they kind of would fall on them to, to provide the people the resources to make it happen.
Where is the actual contract or whatever that we're awarding? What's the word?
Maybe you need to need to find a list.
So, what does it say that they provide what? Because I also think the healthy snacks, you know, it's good to have it written down what we're expecting, and if they're saying they're excited about helping with healthy snack, it sounds like all three.
Well, I mean, and I think that's, I think it's actually something to be negotiated within this number, which is 475-3600.
But didn't they put in a bid for X service when they wrote their number?
No. Well, they can't, they can't change the, the prices they're offering, because they said they'd do universal lunch and universal breakfast, so that's what it's going to be.
But they did specifically talk about being able to, to coordinate with, obviously they wanted the bid, so they would be very, very...
Yeah, well, they, everybody said they'd do everything, so that's what she answered, we got everything. So, so the difference would be, the difference in the price of the contract of adding $110,236 to the cost of the contract. Though they're projecting that your participation rates and the reimbursement would cover that. So, when you, so, so we would be awarding a larger contract. They're saying that it's cost neutral.
Most of that's going to come through, yeah.
And I think, since we have an ongoing relationship with this vendor, I think that there's opportunity to then say, well, what is it that you can do? And I think that if, if it comes in is, I, I think it means it'll be another negotiation, what they can do within that dollar.
Well, they said they're basically receptive to any negotiation or contract to ease...
And again, you know, it's, it's a year-to-year, the contracts are in by their, this is that, or at least it's not.
I guess I would, I would want Jim Kane to be able to explain to us the implications.
Yeah. So, the timing on this, if we are going to speak with, we probably, we probably need to bring this to another rather short meeting some morning very soon, if we feel like we don't have enough information to vote now, which would be fine, and, but it would have to be, I'd say within the next week, if that's...
Has the high school done that?
They did, they did it, they approved Cafe.
So, how about we give Jim and see if we can schedule a short meeting and talk about what the cost implication of this would be.
And with Cafe Services there as well, so that we can know that?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Well, I think we should maybe talk to Jim, too, about the school-by-school situations. You know, Janet seems pretty concerned about the impact on labor and making sure that that doesn't, that that's part of the commitment of Cafe Services.
The resource.
But I, I'd like to make it clear, it's, it seems as though we are bound and determined to go with Cafe Services because they have a strong history, all administrators want to keep them as the vendors, so that's not really the issue, right?
Yeah, it's more the cost.
The issue is the cost, and that's something we need to start out with Jim. So, I think it's pretty clear what we need to do.
Right.
The other thing I feel funny about is voting to, to say that we're, is that what you're saying, Peter, we should vote?
No.
Okay, so saying that...
I don't think we need to vote, but I think it's pretty clear that the resolution is not about the vendor, the resolution is about the program.
Right. I just feel like I need to know exactly what we're voting on and accepting, sorry, because of...
Well, you're not, you're not voting.
We're not voting, so, yeah.
But when we, when we meet with Jim, to me, it's not, what Margaret just said, of just a, a question of the cost, it's a question of exactly what's included in the contract and what we're expecting.
That's why I would say, so let's have Jim provide that, the implications of that, the information about that, and you can vote on them.
And how would we get reassurance from the Cafe Services, that they would provide the resources?
Through Jim.
Jim will contact him, okay. And I think we anticipated a short meeting based on the being back with the vendors to include the universal breakfast program, to see if they can...
Well, he had, he had, he had, that's with this way. This document was the result of Jim going back and asking each of the three vendors what about breakfast, so. So, to be continued soon.
So, this will be a meeting, a morning meeting within the next week?
Yeah.
And we all are available to do that?
Yes.
Like depending...
On the morning.
I have, I have lacrosse camp for one kid at 9:00 every day.
I want you to refuse.
Okay, it might be early. Okay, so, on the agenda, the committee reports, the last, there's two more things. One is the solar project update, it's on the agenda, did you have something for that?
Oh, no, he couldn't come.
Okay, so, to be continued, so it probably will be, if not our next meeting. So, finally, the summer schedule.
Oh, wait, the solar guy, you are going, it's going to come some point soon?
Yeah.
That was their request, right?
Yeah, we're probably in the fall.
It probably is fall.
I was, I spoke to, I was up, the VSBA retreat was a week ago today, and I talked to Harry Frank, who came down to the essentials of the school board, what was it called?
Training.
Yeah.
Yeah, and about coming down and doing it with all of us, and he, and I asked him what days he might be available, and he, he had Tuesday, the 17th, 16th of July, and Wednesday, the 17th of July, to do that training for us.
Okay.
Which would be separate from when we get together with everybody and do goals.
But, but that meeting would be before we do the goal-setting meeting, right?
It would make sense, we would, to be, yes.
What were the dates?
16th and 17th of July.
And the 17th would be our normal third meeting anyway, even though we don't do normals in summer.
Henry Frank?
Harry. Was it Harry or Dan?
And he's come at night or during the day?
Sure, yeah, Henry is, all right, thanks.
Would he come, he'd come either during the day or at night?
Yeah, at our leisure.
And, and that was, so specifically, what is he doing?
He'll do a, well, he'll talk to you and figure it out.
Yeah.
A training for the board on the essentials of the school board, I forget exactly the title, but...
Yeah, so, particularly in terms of, I was thinking about in terms of community engagement, which we've talked a lot about needing to do going forward, and that's one of the things that they focus on and have a lot of resources for.
So, I had talked to Harry as well, and I wasn't sure what your meeting schedule was, so I'd thrown out August 7th, but, and I haven't heard back from him yet, but if he can do the 17th and people are available... he can do the seventeenth and people are available in July, it would be good to get him down.
Do you guys want to do that during the day or in the evening?
It's, he's coming from, not today, so it would be easier if it were in the day, but I don't know how, if that's, you know, how possible it is for him.
That's okay with me, only the sixteenth or the seventeenth, to do it during the day?
Yeah, the sixteenth is bad.
I was hoping to leave for that whole week, but I don't have...
It's a Wednesday.
So it's the next, like, the next week, or is it...
That's the next month. So, yeah, so why don't we say the seventeenth?
So can people do it something? If we said ten thirty?
That would be really, that would be great if I had...
Where? Dad, can we have...
Comfy.
If you're saying July seventeenth, yeah. Can we have this room? This, this comfortable room, which we know is excellent air conditioning.
So if we did something at ten thirty and until one, had some lunch, that sort of thing?
Okay, great.
This would not be goal-setting, it would be...
What he talked to me about was roles and responsibilities of board administrators, and also then specific topics like community outreach and...
And so then, we do a goal-setting usually in August?
I would recommend if we can do August seventh.
Okay.
Because the next week, the administrators are away. And then if we waited until the later meeting in August, I think it gets too close to Jim's office as well.
Yeah, it shuts up really fast.
You guys make me feel like my summer's gone.
Are you here with Peter?
Well, what is summer?
My yellow jumpsuit was having a heart.
Yeah, we're supposed to, that's, you said the seventh, right?
Yeah, it's a Chesterfield, and they have so many snow days.
I was tentatively planning on not being here, so. I was hoping to be in Illinois on the seventh.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm out of town, but if you, if we did it after, in the afternoon or evening, I could, I could do it on the seventh.
Is the eighth or ninth better?
Probably not for Jill.
I don't know, I haven't scheduled it yet, so I guess you can... Because just, we have to be back by the nineteenth now for that high school sports stuff. Life has changed.
Those are some lives are ruled by high school sports, but...
So Jill, you're, you're saying that the seventh isn't good, but it doesn't get better, right?
Pretty much, it'd be a good summary of life, I think.
How about a little bit before the seventh?
How about in that week, like, the fifth or the sixth?
No, I'm, I'm out of town.
Go with Peter, because he's scheduled for sure, and I'll just play around. We may, it all depends on all sorts of things.
Okay, so why don't we say the seventh again, maybe in the middle of the day?
Well, I'm in Westford, Mass. until around noon, so if we could do it later, that'd be good, aren't we? I mean, I don't want to...
How about two?
Two o'clock?
Yeah, two would be great.
It's over by then.
Swimming is over by then.
August seventh, two o'clock.
Okay, now that does complete with the meeting that's happening here that day, so we have to find a different... Or could, could we do it at the central office? We could do that at the central office, which also has air conditioning, so it's really hot.
Two o'clock.
So what day are we doing now? Seventh?
Two P.M. on the seventh, and ten thirty A.M. on the seventeenth of July.
Excellent.
And so is, is Harry supposed to confirm with you on that?
Uh, he wants, well, he wanted Margaret to contact him. You know, he likes to do it through the chairs.
Okay, cool, just let me, yeah. Somebody sent me his email and we'll set that up.
I'll, I'll set it up.
Excellent. Thank you. So, okay.
Can I just comment real quickly on the, the reports that Jim sent out on the honeymoon stuff and the academy school boiler? The main thing is that Mark and I need to meet with Jim, because I have a ton of questions about both of them, and then we'll come back to the board with something the next time we meet.
Yeah, I figured it was a thing that the facilities, you guys had to...
Yeah, so Mark, before we leave tonight, let's just figure out when we can meet with